Have signs made.
Bring the meeting to order. Welcome to Tuesday, January 21st, 2020's session of City Commission Meeting. Let's begin by saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Absolutely. Mayor Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Pearson?
Here.
Commissioner Foote?
Here.
We've got a few last-minute additions to the agenda, the first of which is going to be a proclamation for Catholic Schools Week. If Brad Zimmerman will please come forward, we'll present him a proclamation.
All right. Whereas each year, the Archdiocese of Cincinnati designates one week during the year to highlight Catholic schools, and in 2020, the week designated will be January 26th through February 1st. And whereas since 1853, Pickwah's had a Catholic school, and today, Pickwah Catholic School is an example that a religion-based school can withstand the test of time and change. And whereas the Archdiocese of Cincinnati, I'm sorry, this is real small writing. Network of Catholic schools has grown into the seventh-largest system of Catholic schools in the United States. And whereas Jesus Christ is the reason for the Pickwah Catholic schools and all the Catholic schools, the unseen but ever-present teacher in its classroom, the model of its faculty and staff, and the strength of parents, and the inspiration of its students. Whereas a Catholic school addition, education is highly valued and has played a significant role in the lives of many families. And whereas the presence of a Catholic school in our community has proven to be an additional amenity and incentive to the economic development of the city of Pickwah. And whereas Pickwah Catholic School is proud to be fully accredited by the Ohio Catholic Accrediting Association, where students consistently rank above average in national testing, serving students in grades preschool through eighth. And whereas the school has open enrollment and welcomes students from other communities and other religions and intimate, I'm sorry. All right. Intimate environment at Pickwah Catholic School affords each child personal attention and promotes individual growth, love, and discipline. And whereas the legacy of the Pickwah Catholic Schools will live on for many more years, thanks to the dedicated administrative staff and students, as well as very supportive community. Now therefore, I, Chris Lee, Mayor of Pickwah City Schools, of Pickwah City, oh, City of Pickwah, Ohio, do hereby proclaim, January 26th through February 1st, 2020, as Celebrating Catholic Schools Week in the city of Pickwah. Thank you very much, Mr. Zimmerman.
There you go. Apparently, there's another proclamation that someone wanted to present. Do you guys come forward? May I introduce myself?
The mayor and all the commissioners. Mr. and Mrs. Lewis from 1034 West North in our great city of Pickwah, Ohio. And we were just elated to know that Chris here was our mayor. And I took an article from Time Magazine about Nelson Mandela, a hero's journey. If you permit me, I'll just read just a small portion of it. It says, "A Larger View." It's from 1918 to 2013, that article. And it talks about the larger view about Mandela. Mandela resolved to treat the small world of Robben Island, excuse me, as a microcosm of South Africa as a whole. Long believer that every race must have a place in a reborn nation. He worked hard to get to know his mostly Africaner guards. He increased his studies of the African people's history and culture and came to view the waters as fellow victims of apartheid. After all, they had been steeped in racial animosity since infancy. He believed the only possibility for a future reconciliation between the races in South Africa would come through working with his oppressors. And we just are just so proud of Chris Lee, and we know that he has gone through a lot and that he is now standing forth and just showing that what he can do and just what, just his accomplishment, period. It's just great. I'm made without crying.
I've known you guys a long time, and we've been lifelong friends, and I appreciate you doing this and bringing this to us.
Great. It's just something that we made up for you because you are our hero. And there it is.
Oh, look, it says, "Mayor Chris Lee, my kind of hero." Appreciate it. That's all right. Yep. Thank you. Should've borrowed your glasses. You did, you did, you offered. Next on the agenda, we will adjourn to executive session to prepare for and review negotiations on compensation or other terms and conditions of employment for city personnel.
Motion.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded.
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive. All right, we are back in session. And at this time, we are going to go over our consent agenda.
Yes, one item on the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the January 7th, 2020 regular City Commission Meeting.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we'll move on to old business.
Okay, Ordinance 120, second reading. An ordinance declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of Pickwah, Ohio, to be of public purpose, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation, designating public infrastructure improvements to be made that will benefit such property, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing agreement, and establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund.
Mr. Smeesing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As you'll recall, this relates to the improvements that IDC is constructing at the corner of Country Club and Scarborough Drive in support of their project. This TIF ordinance would allow us to be able to extend the roadway some 390 feet, which ultimately accommodates the changes that IDC will be making on their site so that they can shift their driveway further to the west and be able to build out their expansion. But also, as important, it opens up an additional 10 acres of developable land at the east end of the roadway. We have went through with the proper notifications. As you can see in your packet, we've not received any comments or concerns from anyone in the public.
Any questions from the commission? Any questions from citizens?
I have a question about that. My name's Bill Jaco. I live at 607 North Sunset. When you say, "Extend the road 390 feet or 400 feet," I mean, roads expensive. Who pays for that? So, I mean, the road's gonna be, I mean, I'm trying to visualize that there, and I've been driving out by there, and I've seen that, but there gotta be a couple hundred thousand dollars of road extension there at least.
Funding's coming from the TIF financing. And what happens with that is we recover the valuation of the property with increased property taxes on that. We collect towards paying the project back. Schools still get their 25, get what already is in place for them. And then we also receiving state funding. I think that's to the tune, Chris, of $75,000 to help pay for that.
Okay. I was just curious. So it is like several hundred thousand dollar road you're extending?
It is.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, we'll count that as a second reading. The next is new business.
Ordinance number 20-20, first reading. An emergency ordinance repealing Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwah Code and adopting a new Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwah Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Ms. Bogan will provide the staff report.
Schedule A1 represents the part-time workforce for the city of Pickwah. We've made amendments to the schedule to reflect cost-of-living adjustments and to reflect some consolidation in positions. We've also made adjustments to reflect the minimum wage increase.
This is an emergency ordinance?
Yes, we would ask you to waive the three reading.
I make a motion, we waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Emergency ordinance, emergency has passed. Now we'll...
See, the amendment passed.
Amendment passed.
The waiver passed.
waiver passed.
So now we need to vote on the ordinance itself.
They don't take questions on it or anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did the motion second.
Yeah. So, any questions?
Someone needs to make a motion to pass the ordinance.
I make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2-20.
I second.
Moved and seconded.
Comments?
Now, any commissioners have any comments? Any public? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Read the next ordinance, number 320.
An emergency ordinance repealing existing Chapter 33.05 and 33.08 and enacting a new Chapter 33.05 and 33.08 of the Pickwah Code relating to employee policy.
Ms. Bogan.
This ordinance updates Chapter 33.05 of Pickwah Code to clarify sick leave accumulation for employees who are rehired with the city of Pickwah. The update to 33.08 of the Pickwah Code reflects an increase to the amount of wellness dollars that can be earned by employees for completing established wellness activities.
All right.
And we would ask for waiving on the three readings on this one.
I make a motion, we waive the three reading rules on ordinance number 3-20.
I second.
All right, moved and seconded. The, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, it's been waived. I need a motion for the ordinance.
I motion for approval, order number 3-20.
Second.
All right. Any questions from the commission? Any questions from the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next is resolution number, or ordinance number 4-20.
An ordinance requesting the replat of several lots north of Wood Street, the vacation of a portion of alley right-of-way, and the dedication of new public right-of-way.
Mr. Smeesing.
Thank you. As you'll recall, this was the item that was presented to City Commission, I believe, in December, asking for a resolution declaring your intent to vacate public right-of-way, which then is advertised and notices are placed in the paper, and it's referred to the Planning Commission, who holds the public hearing on the matter. So earlier in January, the public hearing was held at the Planning Commission. It took into consideration the request being made. They found no concerns with vacating the existing right-of-way, which is, it's platted, but it's unimproved. There really is no alley where the alley is being vacated. But as part of the item that you have in your packet this evening, you'll note there's also the dedication of public right-of-way, which would turn the alignment of the alley and run it out to Wood Street on the westernmost edge of this subject property. At the conclusion of the process, the lot would be replatted into one single track, which would prepare it for the development activity that's proposed for the site. This is the site of the Wood Street Lost Project, 52 units of workforce housing, some $10 million in investment, and a very nice amenity for our community. So what is being asked for this evening is approval of the resolution, which would in effect permit the vacation of the public right-of-way and allow for the dedicating of the new right-of-way. I know the developer is here this evening and has indicated to me that there is some interest in moving this along as quickly as they can. They're working to meet some deadlines, so I'll let them speak to that issue.
Any ques, oh, go right ahead.
Everyone, I'm Wes Young from St. Mary Development, and Chris, thank you for that update. We are just in the process of working on all the documents and getting everything to the investor and the lender to be able to close around March 1st. We're optimistic that Ohio weather will cooperate at that point, and we've had a pretty decent winter so far. But that's the main reason that we would, you know, would ask if it is possible to waive the, I guess, the second and third reading. And, you know, we're anxious to get started. And, you know, the project takes about 14 months, so that would put us about May 1st, 2021. And that'd be, you know, a really good time to have the project completed and as people are making decisions on where to live for the next school year at that point in time. So it's, that would be helpful. I know that I talked with the investor today, and they're very interested in, you know, the outcome of the approval of what's on the, in front of us tonight and so forth. So any consideration, we would appreciate it.
Thank you.
No questions?
Is there a motion to waive the three reading rule?
I'll make that motion to waive the three reading rule.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion on the, on the ordinance?
I make a motion on the ordinance. I know that this has been in process for how many months, year? I'm trying to remember when we started this process.
I was much earlier.
So was I.
We were fortunate. It was a submission in the 2018, February 2018 round of tax credit. And we were not successful that year, and then the next year we were successful. So this started in probably September of 2017.
Right, right. It's been a couple of years. Yeah, this is great. This is wonderful because it's so needed for the community, so thank you.
We're marathon sprinting our business, such as you know.
Yeah, I make a motion for the ordinance number 4-20.
Second.
All right. Any comments from the commission?
It'll be a great addition to that area.
Great. I totally agree. That's gonna look great over there.
Especially to be right off the bike path, too.
Some of the amenities, yeah, some of the amenities, like the boardroom and the movie room that you had planned for it, I thought was great. So anybody that gets to move in there is really gonna enjoy it. Any comment from the citizens? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, next on the agenda is resolution number R-12-1.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Barrett Paving Materials, Inc. as the primary supplier and Valley Asphalt Corp. as the secondary supplier of 404 asphalt for the 2020 street and alley maintenance program.
Mr. Brookhart will provide the presentation.
In December 2019, our purchasing analysis went out to bid for asphalt for the street department for the 2020 season. Barrett Asphalt came back with the lowest cost at $63 per ton for 404 asphalt, and Valley Asphalt came back with $65 per ton. Similar to last year, we would like to issue a purchase order to Barrett and Valley Asphalt, with Barrett being our primary supplier for 404 asphalt, to ensure that the asphalt will be available to the city when it's needed. Total budget for the 2020 season will be $300,000.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I got a question. Are those the only two options that we have to bid from?
In this area, that is correct. Yes.
And then if we provide that purchase order, if we don't use all of that, how's that work?
If we don't use all that funding, that funding will go, it would roll over into our budget for the next year.
So do we purchase it on an as-needed basis, or are we paying for that full $300,000 and then?
We purchase that on an as-needed basis. As we're using the material, that's when we use those funds.
Understood. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All right.
Let's do the motion and second.
Motion to approve. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number...
Resolution.
Or resolution number R-12-20.
I'll second it.
All right. Comments from the citizens?
I just want to say again to you, Chris, that it took Tom Hudson about a year to figure out parliamentary procedures, so you just hang in there, it's coming.
Okay. Thank you.
It's tough. It's, I...
It is.
Believe me, it is hard. But my question about this specific is, I brought this question up several weeks ago, and I don't understand. I asked, I said, you know, you guys want a million dollars for a year for more money for our streets? And you told me that we don't pave our own streets, but here we're buying $300,000, $400,000 worth of asphalt. What are we doing with all that asphalt?
I didn't tell you that we didn't pave our own streets. We do pave some.
So do we pave our, I mean, it's hard for me. I look at trucks in the city of Pickwah. You're putting a line of asphalt. So are we paving our own streets or not?
We do small sections, our public works department does, small sections and potholes. Our major paving comes from a contractor, and that's the major paving that we do.
Is there any way for me to get actual facts and figures on that so that, you know, I can compare it to what Troy's laying asphalt, what it costs them, or what other communities are paying?
If you request the bids that we did last year, we can certainly provide those.
I mean, do we keep, I mean, do we know what streets, I mean, you know, you're telling me that we're not paving streets, and I see...
No, I never told you that we weren't paving streets. We do pave streets. We have two different paving programs. One is the major paving that we do throughout the year with contractor. The second is our public works department paves smaller sections of roadways, not big, long streets, but they can do smaller sections and alleys and trail and things like that.
Do we know what it costs us to lay a, you know?
Well, it depends on what you're doing, because if you're just doing repaving or milling, whether you're doing road reconstruction, all those things vary such a lot.
They generally bid that stuff by the pound or by the ton. That's not hard to figure out. We ought to know what it costs for us to lay a ton of asphalt in the city of Pickwah.
If you're just talking asphalt, he just gave you the bid on it. It was $63.
Okay, I want to know what it takes to turn that into a street you can drive on. That's what I want to know. And I'd like to be able to compare that to what Troy pays.
It depends on what you're doing with the street.
We can take a section of Troy Street, a section of Pickwah Street, and then we can let, before we give you guys another million dollars a year to spend on streets, you guys ought to be able to figure out what's it cost the city of Pickwah to put asphalt down. Now, I got a lot of people in the private sector telling me that you're losing your shirt. Now, either they're wrong or he's wrong. Somebody's wrong. But at any rate, it's your job to figure that out. If it's costing us twice as much to do our own asphalt, whether it's little sections or big sections, then you guys need to get it out of the asphalt business. Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution passes. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-13-20.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union 252 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC, fire officers.
Ms. Bogan will handle the next four items.
Thank you. The IAFF Officers Contract represents our fire officers, including fire captains and assistant chiefs. The resolution before you will repeal the existing collective bargaining agreement that expired on 12/31/2019. The new tentative agreement before you would be in effect until 12/31/22, 2022.
All those, yeah, I need a motion, guys.
I'll give a motion for resolution number R-13-20.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any questions by the commission? Any questions by citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolution number R-14-20.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with local union 252 International Association of Firefighters, AFL-CIO-CLC, for firefighters.
The IAFF Firefighters Contract represents all firefighter, paramedic employees. Again, this resolution will replace the contract, which expired on 12/31/19, with a new tentative agreement before you to expire on 12/31/2022.
A motion for resolution number R-14-20.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Anybody have any comment? Any commissioner?
No.
Any citizen have a comment? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next on the agenda is resolution number R-15-20.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police.
The FOP Contract represents our City of Pickwah police officers. Again, the resolution will replace the collective bargaining agreement that expired on 12/31/2019, with a tentative agreement before you to expire on 12/31/2022.
Thank you.
Motion for resolution number R-15-20.
Second.
Motioned and seconded. Any comments from the commission? Comments from the citizens? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Next ordinance, or next in order is resolution number R-16-20.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association.
The OPBA Contract represents our police command staff, including police lieutenants and deputy chiefs. Again, their current collective bargaining agreement expired on 12/31/2019. The tentative agreement before you would expire on 12/31/2022.
Motion?
Motion for resolution R-16-20.
And I'd like, I'll second that. And I want to say that, you know, we are very fortunate to have the police force and the fire department that we have here in our city and what they do to keep our citizens safe and to... do to keep our citizens safe and to answer the calls that they do. So I just want to, I just want to say a huge thank you to those officers that put themselves in harm's way, and especially our fire department and all that they do for our city.
I would agree, and light as some of the recent stuff that had happened in the news, I mean, we've got a dynamic and, and a very good police department. We have an excellent fire department as well, but Police Department finding those materials in town, it was, it was scary, but it was great that you were able to do what you were doing and just keep up the good job, and we appreciate it, chief. Thank you. Any comments from the citizens? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. And the last one on the list is Resolution Number R-17-20.
A resolution authorizing the lease of a portion of parcel number N-44-250063.
Mr. Birch will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The subject property has been identified as a suitable location for a telecommunications hut for NK Telco. The city entered into agreement to lease fiber to NK Telco in January of 2017 in order to serve businesses, commercial accounts, and residents. The subject property is part of the RM Davis Water Tower property. The utility hut will be similar to the hut that is outside, out at roadside park that NK Telco installed, and similar to the one they will be installing at the Upper Valley Career Center. The negotiated lease includes wording that allows the lease, this lease to be amended should the fiber lease agreement that we have with NK Telco be terminated. We can come back and, and adjust this or, or cancel this lease if, if we need to. As part of this lease, NK Telco also agreed to extend the City of Pickwa's fiber network to the RM Davis Water Tower at no cost to the city.
I need a motion on the resolution.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-
Can you wait, please? Thank you. Just wait, no. We're gonna, we're gonna do this, and then we'll ask for the commission and then ask you. We're not approving it, we're just asking for the motion.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R-17-20.
Second.
Now, commission, you have any questions?
Can you help explain to me a little bit? I wasn't here during the 2017, but what is exactly the hut? Is it a part of the infrastructure to help it expand, or?
It's a hut, is this a building that they put, that NK Telco will put their communications equipment in? Lot of times, companies will have just a, a box out there, but NK Telco chooses to have a, an actual hut. It's a brick-looking building, I don't think it's, I think it's actually concrete, and it's about 10 by 20, that they have their, so when they're doing their wiring and slicing everything, they are actually inside of a building. So they, the one out at roadside park is, is a nice looking, looking building, it's, it's just a bigger, than a box for communications, so their, their employees can actually go inside, and their fiber that they've leased from us, they will go into that hut, and then from there go out to the businesses that, that they support.
So are they building that hut, and then that's what we're authorizing for them to put out there? I'm a little confused.
Yeah, this is a lease for that land at the RM Davis property that they'll put, and they're actually like prefab, prefab buildings, they don't actually build it, but they'll put a foundation in and, and put the concrete box, I guess, is what it is.
So Gary, the, the fiber is offered to businesses first, is that how it works?
I think that's the NK Telco's business model, is they try to pick up the business first and then to the residential, so.
And so at some point in time, residences will have access to fiber?
Right.
Dean, how fast is fiber compared to the cable?
I mean, the fiber can be up to a gigabyte, if the fiber, now, if you have gig fiber, most machines on the end really can't, you know, handle that, or handle the gig, but, so if your PC and your modem at home, you know, even though if you have gig, or to your business, if your modem is that fast, it won't necessarily be able to really take advantage of that. But it's businesses, large businesses, you know, eventually that a data farm of some sort can come in and, if they, we have offered the gig speed, they can, you know, NK Telco, or, and we also have an agreement with Comnet IFN, that they've leased some fiber from it. They, they came in and did one business, and they've kind of, not dropped out, but they just haven't pushed it too far. But NK Telco has done Upper Valley Career Center, some Wilson Health facilities, and and Wilson Health, Upper Valley Career Center, the Western Higher Organization, WOCO, which is part of the Upper Valley Career Center, they're talking to the Pickwa City Schools now, so.
So is that the only option to take advantage of that fiber network, is through NK Telco, or is there, you said there was another one?
Yeah, there's another one, IFN, which is Independence Fiber Network out of WAPOC. They also, they, they can also lease our fiber. But any other company who wanted to, if they wanted to lease our fiber, we would, you know, we can sit down and negotiate that with anybody, so.
Anyone in the, any citizen want to make a comment? Well, I want you to get up if you want to.
Let me answer your question for you. Fiber travels at the lightest speed, that's about 186,000 miles a second, so it doesn't get any faster, that's the fastest out there. The real question you guys ought to be concerned about, in my opinion, is, is I think y'all wasted about, about $2 million, not you guys, not one of you were here, unless I'm wrong, but I think the city, you weren't here either, Gary, you-
Yes, I was.
You came here when they-
Yeah, I did it.
So you were here when, when they started. So did we spend $1.7 million in sawing fiber around our town or not?
Yes, we did.
Can you tell me what the return on investment has been on that since you invested that?
Well, that will come as we get new businesses and they need that.
What? You can't tell these people what the return on investment on a $2 million expenditure is?
It won't be for a while.
So we're spending $2 million at a time, and you guys can't even tell me what the return on investment is? Can you tell me what we've taken in since we've, since we made that investment?
Not off the top of my head right now.
Okay, I, I just, I would appreciate it if one of you would find out that what we did with taxpayer money of $1.7 million, and I would like to know what the return on investment of that is. If not, then I think we ought to quit wasting money on things like that, or you got to get a bigger pool of people to start thinking about these things and quit delegating these things to the couple people that don't know anything about it. Or at least, I would think, if you spend $1.7 million, you could tell me what the return on investment is. I'm sure Dan French could.
Ms. Jaco, I got a question for you, if you don't mind. So you were talking about with the fiber optics, you know, it moves at the speed of light, it's amazingly fast, and a lot of times you see new businesses or with IT structure as crucial for them to operate. So was there another alternative besides fiber optics that you're alluding to?
No, fiber optics is the fastest in the, you know, there's nothing other than God that's faster than the lightest speed. So you're never going to get any faster than the lightest speed, but the question is, are these suppliers these guys are dealing with, are, you know, the, you know, they're questionable suppliers. I've been dealing with this subject for a couple weeks now, talking to the people who were commenting on it when this first came out, and, and you know, there's, there were lots of other alternatives, but what we said, we told everybody in the City of Pickwa, take your $1.7 million and invest it, and then we'll have this great fiber, you know, most people, how many people, how many, aside from the City of Pickwa, how many businesses are on that now? I'm guessing a handful.
So, and I think that was my question, is in order to bring in additional businesses, that's one of the, a key parts that a business would look forward to, is to be able to have something like that to them, because fiber optics seems like it's on the latest edge and provides them-
Along with upgraded infrastructure and, and utilities, that's what they're looking for.
Yeah, the, the company that he's talking about, my understanding is, is that what they, that's, that is sort of their hallmark, they go around and they, they tie up infrastructure like that, and they don't really do much with it until, until you guys make a move, and, and then all of a sudden, you're not, you know, you're paying premium dollars rather than just, you know, normal.
That's, that's really not the case, and, and we built the fight, we built the backbone of the fiber throughout the city. They will lease it, and they're building their network to be able to get to all businesses and residents, so that payoff will come in the future, but it takes a while to build it out.
And if it's in place, then we can attract businesses and industries here.
You know, I, I think you guys can make that argument all day long, it doesn't take 10 years, it doesn't take 10 years to develop this kind of systems. It, it, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't work that way. It's all, it's all supply and demand driven, and if, if the demand is there, the supply's going to suck it up, and that's not happening here in the City of Pickwa. And I don't think anybody, I mean, can you imagine what we could do with that, with the interest just in that $1.7 million if we still had it? I mean, if somebody were to answer my question, how much money, what, what's the return on investment so far? Maybe I should shut up and sit down. But to this point, nobody's answered my question. That was 10 years ago. I mean, you know, what's the time value of $1.7 million over 10 years? I mean, I, I think those are the kind of questions that you guys should be dealing with. That's your job, it shouldn't be mine. I shouldn't have to come here and ask questions like that.
Mayor Lee, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
This past week, Commissioner Pearson and myself and-
Let's get about that.
City Manager Gary Huff and Chris Schmiesing and a, and a variety of business leaders in our community attended a mock site visit with Jobs Ohio, and, and Mr. Schmiesing, you can share a little bit about that. I, I know that with Jobs Ohio and, and Ohio, it, in itself as a state, is way ahead of many other states in our country on doing some of these things that need to be done to attract businesses to come to our community. And as Mr. Schmiesing and other folks sat down with, with Jobs Ohio for this mock site visit, they were pretty well amazed and applauding the work that we are doing here in the City of Pickwa to attract businesses. Am I correct?
Yeah, they responded very positively towards the, the work we've done to put our infrastructure in such a good standing, and reinforced for us what we already understand, is that if, if we don't have property owners with property that are willing to engage in the development activity, then it's very difficult to be competitive when you're talking with national site selectors who are looking at sites all across the nation. So when they bring requests to the state of Ohio, and the state of Ohio puts out RFI out to our community, and we have to respond to it, we can respond very, very well in the boxes that are asking about infrastructure. We can tell them that we've got incredibly reliable electric, and we've got services that they can't necessarily get in other communities when it comes to electric service, same thing with fiber. When they ask about water and sewer, we can tell them that we have the excess capacity, and we've got a modern plant and facilities that are, are going to continue to operate at a high level and make sure that the, their needs are being met. Where we are unable to be responsive, if you will, is when they're asking for 30, 50, 100 acres, and if you don't have a property owner who has committed to a sale price and in writing indicates that the property is available and can be acquired, you're out of the game. They simply move on to the next. So they, they gave us a lot of encouragement in terms of the things we are doing to position the community to be very competitive, they, they gave us high praise, with the one caveat being that we need to figure out how to get control or have those persons who own those properties be friendly towards development.
Okay, thank you. I just think that just went hand in hand with what we were talking about, and I think we are doing and making great strides with our infrastructure.
I agree. I think if you build it, they will come, and we are definitely building the things that will attract industry to this location, so.
And not only are we meeting it, but we are in excess. That's a big plus of our infrastructure. So we are very attractive.
Just got to get them here.
That's right. It's like a woman who's looking for a pair of jeans, and she's looking to see if it's a five pocket, if it's a bootleg or whatever, but it's, it's that kind of shopping that they are, you've got to have your ducks in a row.
I agree. Alright, anybody else in the, in, any other citizen have comment? Alright, all those in favor of the motion? Resolution, I'm sorry.
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. At this time, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission regarding agenda items, issues, or provide information. Comments or requests to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the city manager's office.
Go first and clear the way for everybody else that's here, and I'd like to say to you that I hope you stick in there. I've pounded you pretty good for a couple years.
My turn.
And I hope that you, you hang in there, so you, I've been through all that, I ran as a Democrat in this county and, and early in my year, and they, they beat my brains out, so I don't feel sorry for you, and I'm not going to apologize, but I just hope you hang in there. So I'd, I'd just like to say to you tonight, since we're on this subject, it's not what I came here to talk about, but can you all tell us when this is going to happen? The only thing I hear is a bunch of cheerleading and all these planes that are behind the scene, and can you tell the people of Pickwa when these things are going to start to happen? When are these industries going to start showing up here? How long does it take? I mean, I spent my whole week sitting out to all, all the people in Pickwa, Troy's Economic Development Plan, I don't really care about Troy, but they have a nice economic development plan.
Strategic plan or economic plan?
Well, it's sort of both, they have a whole website devoted to it, okay? And so that, that, what they say on their website and what I get from talking to most of those people, and I'm sure there's people here tonight then that can address Troy's the way Troy does it, but what they do, it's out in the open, okay? So it's not these, you know, behind the scenes things where people talk about, you know, all this great stuff that's going on behind the scenes. Get that out there where the public can see it, so we can participate, okay? So you know, you know, maybe you would get a little more citizen participation if you get it out in the air, get it out where people can see it. And then every so often, every year or so, let's, let's hear about how you're doing. Gary said the last time he's talked about it was, what, 2013 or 2014? I don't know, I heard somebody ask you, it was five or six years ago you commented on it. I think you people would, would focus on it yearly, maybe even, you know, maybe in every meeting or something, just get it out where the public can see it. So here's the economic development plan, we spent $1.7 million in fiber optic, here is our return on investment. You see, I'm doing good for the citizens, so Pickwa, let's do another project. I think until you do that, it's going to be tough for the community to support you guys.
So the last time we did our strategic plan was 2017, it was updated. Would you like a copy?
I've seen it, I got it.
Okay.
I got it.
So it wasn't 2013, just to let you know. And when was the last factory in Troy built? Do you know?
Mine in Tip City, Abbott just bought it.
Troy?
Well, I don't know about Troy.
I'm just asking, I mean-
I have no idea.
Okay. Maybe you could check and, and-
I can tell you Abbott Industries just bought for about the same amount of what we pay per acre, what you guys are telling me nobody will buy around here, Abbott Industries just bought a whole load of it down in Tip City.
In Tip, okay.
You know, I can go back to the exact same thing, you know, you, you know, where's the growth in Pickwa? It should be reflected in our, in, you know, do you guys realize that in 2018, that we built five houses in this, there was 2,000 new housing permits in, in 2018, and Pickwa had five of them? Now, if you're going to stay, if you want to stay on this subject about how great you're doing, then fine, I'll keep coming back up and pounding on it, but that's not the case.
We want you to ask any question you feel that you need to ask, and we'll try and be responsive to you, Mr. Jaco.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Joe Drapp, 1366 Park Avenue. That was not a setup at the beginning of the meeting, I want you to know, I just-
Look, you know where this is going? This is going upstairs on my dresser, and I'm going to look at it quite a bit, so thank you, I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah.
It wasn't a setup, I know.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
We had a lot of talk about our mileage and paving roads, and I believe we have 100 and, almost 130 miles of road, mile road, which mile road is a mile road north and miles south, and in some places we have a lot of paving to do in a small geographical area. So I believe that the cost for milling the street and paving, which is a very minimum, I think it's around 180,000, in this area, about $180,000 a mile. So if we were to spend another million dollars, that's not very many miles of our road, and that's just if we mill the road and repave it, take a couple inches off and put a few inches back. But if we have to go down like on Caldwell Street, they actually had a lot of base work that they did in that project, which would not be covered under our normal yearly maintenance with Barrett or, or whoever. I think when we did Park Avenue, if it takes a total rebuild, you're up over a million dollars a mile, if you have to go all the way down to the- dollars a mile if you have to go all the way down to the sanitary and work your way up. So it's very expensive to do. So a million dollars, at least in my opinion, I know that's a lot of money, but that doesn't in this day and age get a lot of work done. So I personally have no qualms at all about spending that additional money. As for the issue regarding our fiber optic cable, we have spent, yeah, 1.7 million, I knew we spent a lot of money on that project, but the benefits were all projected to be down the road. For instance, I believe that all of our metering is going through the fiber optic system.
It's Wi-Fi.
I don't know if there's somebody
Wi-Fi. It's Wi-Fi.
What's that?
It's Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi? Are we not using the optic cable for
Skater and things like that, yes.
Yes, okay.
We have to, it's required.
Yeah, so I believe it's a good groundwork gone going forward, which I have no trouble selling in the city of Pickwa anymore. I know our utilities are high, but we got a new water plant, we got a new water treatment plant, we have one of the nation's most efficient electrical systems, and it looks like we're gonna go approximately nine years before we'll have to have another increase. So our last increase came in 2014 and we think we've managed it well enough that going forward, at least for a couple of years, we should have, maintain those rates steady. So I think I'm pleased with what we've got done and, Chris, for you, I hope that you're not facing unrealistic expectations. I for one, I know that's tough and that you've already faced some of those.
Exactly.
And being a nice guy and being, listening to all the question doesn't deter many of the facts when it comes right down to it. Is that right?
About the facts, you're right.
So, and Kazi, you did a great job, dear lady.
You did a great job.
Put your heart in it and
She still does.
So can't do any more than that. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you very much, sir. Anyone else?
Jay Roman, 406 West High. Got it this time. I wanna go on the record publicly first off by saying thank you to Pickwa PD
Yes.
for stopping that meth lab. As you noticed, my address is right across the street. And to come home from work and to see my street blocked off and cops everywhere, my first thought is, well, A, I hope my house is still there, and B, what's going on? And to find out that there's a possible meth lab across the street from my house where I've been living at for years and years and years now, it's kinda freaky to think about that. So good job to you guys. Thank you very much for taking care of that. I do appreciate it. Something else that I kinda wanna touch on here tonight is kind of, as I said last week, I've been kind of trying to focus on missing information and just bringing things to light that I feel like need to be addressed. And one of those things in this sense is, and it has really nothing to do with what we talked about tonight, but I don't know if you guys pay attention to the news much, but what's going on in Virginia right now with the governor and people's rights being taken away? It seems to be a big thing in this country lately is people talking about my rights are being taken away. And in some cases, they are. We're not gonna get into whether or not the people in Virginia are having their rights taken away or not. That's not the point here. But another right that we have here in America is the freedom of speech. And to imply that you don't have the right to complain or you don't have the right to cheerlead in general, you don't have the right to say anything. You should just shut up, sit down, and take it as it is. That really has to stop here. While you guys were in executive session, I had people behind me talking about people should just quit complaining and trust the process. Well, the problem with that is the process has been going on for a long time and it just keeps spinning wheels. And Albert Einstein said that doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results is insanity. And I think it's only fair that if people feel that way, they should have the right to say it. Now, you might not agree with Bill Jacqua, but you have to respect the fact that he has the right to say it. I don't agree with everything Bill Jacqua says. I just got on him earlier in the week, actually, myself.
I want him to come up here. I have no problem with it.
But everyone, myself, everyone here has the right to say whatever they need, they want to say because that's how these problems start with the miscommunication between everybody in general, is not having the ability to say it to begin with and not having somebody sit there and listen. And I respect the fact that you actually stopped Bill and asked him a question, Chris Grissom, for the people who can't see on the video. You stopped and asked him a question, get him to, you know, be more engaged. That's what we need. We don't need more silence. We need more engagement. We need more people talking to each other.
And we want people coming out and I welcome them every time.
And that's why
Just like you do that, you do that as well. You invite people on your website. I want people to come as well because the more people asking questions, the more stuff comes out of the darkness and into the light, like you said.
Exactly. And even if I'm wrong and you're right.
Or you're wrong.
I'll shut up because I hate being wrong. Now, again, that's not always the case, but just in general, silence is not the answer. The answer is communication. And that's what I wanted to say along with, along with thinking the PD.
Appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Wade Westfall, 116 and a half.
Know this guy?
Troy, Ohio.
Yes, sir.
I come before you tonight to say hello and announce that I'm a candidate for Miami County Commissioner. Having served on the Board of Commission, I come with a deep understanding and of the requirements and the responsibilities. Our municipalities, as you know, are the economic engines through which our county prospers and it should never be an either or relationship, but rather a fully integrated process striving to provide seamless and cost-effective services. For when the cities and the counties come together, Frank, your dad was a perfect example of that, through the leadership of your father, through the leadership of Tony White and Police Chief, Fire Chief Fashioner, we were able to bring together the entire county into the 911 system. And yes, that was 30 years ago. When we bring those type programs together, we work seamlessly together. We provide the services that our citizens in this county deserve. With an ever-changing, challenging world, we must strive to be innovative. Our success, our future success is, we're gonna be judged upon that innovation. Building that consensus you talk about is critical to the process of bringing the citizens along. I have deep roots here in the city of Pickwa, being born and raised on the corner of Wayne and Garnsey, having started my family here and having started my business career. I'm still an employee in the city of Troy as a cycling instructor at the YMCA. I am a lifelong resident of Miami County. I do not seek this office for political ambition or financial gain. My purpose of seeking this office is to be a part of a team that guides the county into a prosperous and healthy and future benefiting all the citizens. I thank you for this opportunity. I thank each and every one of you for the services you provide to your city. I've been there. I know what it's like. It is a thankless job, but it's a needed job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dan French, 1127 North Sunset. I just wanna take a moment to congratulate and welcome two new commissioners to the to the city commission, Cindy Pearson and Thomas Voet. Welcome to both of you and congratulations to Casey Hines for coming back as Fifth Ward Commissioner and especially to our new mayor, Chris Lee.
Thank you.
I think that's the story of your growing up in Rossville with outhouses in the back. A lot of people had outhouses in those days, but you've come a long way and that's just super.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And also Vice Mayor Chris Grissom.
He's awesome.
We've got a lot of opportunities in the city. There's a lot of positive things that are going on with the new developments and the lock nine and some businesses are talking about it. We also have some controversies. I think the important thing is that we focus on the positive things. We all are here, hopefully, to try to make our community a better place in which to live and work. That certainly is the goal of positively promoting Pickwa, that organization, and we're trying to make those things happen. And we wanna work with other people who wanna make those things happen as well. And we can do it cooperatively. You can disagree without being disagreeable. And you certainly have the support of PPP on anything that is positive that'll make our community a better place. So welcome aboard. Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Mike Gutman, 21 Merriman Drive, Pickwa. And I wanna add also some positive comments for what the city's doing and the direction they're taking. I know you go through ebbs and flows. There are times when the economic times are difficult. Nothing happens instantly. You do have to lay the groundwork and you have to work hard. You gotta meet, I know how hard all of you work. I know you have work sessions, you have budgets, but you're open. I think you're open to listen to people and I think we'll continue to do that. I serve on the Civil Service Commission. Proud to do that for a number of years. I come into contact with our police department, our fire department, some of the best professional people I've encountered in my, you know, years as an attorney. I admire them very much. Our Human Relations Director and Finance Director, I know people are working very hard. So let's continue to do that. Let's kinda come up with constructive ideas. I know your office is open to questions, so if people wanna get facts, they can get facts. Let's work together to solve some of these issues without making accusations and I encourage you to keep, continue doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Dave Hitchens, 803 Camp Street.
How you doing, sir?
Are there any updates on the lock nine project? Because to me, it looks like they're done right now because they've seated. Looks like the bike pass open.
Well, that was the first phase of development, which were utility projects. We had to replace a very old stormwater line in the park and also remove some antiquated DPNL poles that were running through there. So those have been completed now, so we'll be moving into the second phase. Now, the second phase really is dependent upon, we applied for a number of grants. We were getting some donations. So it's really gonna be the, for the park itself, that's where the funding's gonna come from. So we're working those things very hard and hope to have some good results from grants and so forth to be able to move forward with the next phase.
Now, the locks that are exposed, is that all there is?
Well, no, there's a lot more to come in that. We, the old stormwater line happened to be right between the old lock walls, so we took advantage of having to replace that and left them exposed because that's part of the new entrance down to the river. But all that, we'll get a lot more improvement through the next phases.
Okay, I hadn't heard anything. You just drive by and see stuff and like, I haven't seen much go on.
Great question. I appreciate you asking that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Natalie?
Hi, Natalie Young, 1234 Marwood Drive. I was just curious if there's any updates on the conversations with the owners of the mall?
No. We've made several attempts to contact them, but no response yet.
Okay. When Mr. Drapp was discussing the utility rate, he said something about no increases for nine years. Can anybody expound on that?
No. We're hoping that the rate study that we just did, just completed for power, that there won't be any rate increases for two or three years at least. So that's where we are with that right now. So we'll be releasing that study pretty soon.
Okay. And is the water rate study separate from that?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay. Is there a, do we know when that's gonna be done?
No, we'll probably be doing it in the fall, closer to budget and so forth. We probably won't do the wastewater study until the following year when the plan is completed so that we can get some true costs on operation, so.
Okay. And then I wanted to ask about the comprehensive and the economic development plan that you were referring to. From what's posted on the website, the comprehensive plan was drafted in 2007. Has that been updated since then?
Talking about the strategic plan. Would you like to have a copy?
Sure.
There is a comprehensive plan and we are going through an update right now and this year it should come forward, so.
Okay. And then the economic development plan, looks like it was done in 2014. Is that one that you're also working on or?
We probably will be updating, try to do the update every five years, so we'll be looking at that this year.
Okay. I just wondered, they didn't seem to be like living documents where we're constantly making updates or expanding. I mean, just curious about that.
Yeah, from the documents, the comprehensive plan feeds a lot of other things that we do, strategic plan. All those are different documents, different things that we work on. So there's a comprehensive plan, there's economic development strategic plan. We have our strategic goals, strategic plan for the city as a whole. So those are some of the documents that we update. I think 21, next year will be the five year and we'll be updating all the strategic goals and so forth, which is fed by the other plans.
We make those open so that
They're online.
I know, I mean, open so that citizens can
And all those, and all those documents are, there's a tremendous amount of citizen input.
There is.
So, Chris, how many meetings do we have with comprehensive plan when we did it? The update on the code pick.
There were at least a dozen public meetings and various stakeholder meetings and the participation levels were, is in the hundreds in terms of the number of people who engaged. It was a pretty substantial community engagement exercise.
The economic development strategic plan, when we went through that, there was a lot of citizen meetings and so forth that the citizens actually helped write that document. So I didn't, as been said, I didn't bring it from Fisher's. It was written here by the citizens and a consultant that they worked with on getting it done.
I appreciate that. I wasn't nearly interested in city politics in 2007 or 2014. So I just had one other comment in regards to, you know, all of the infrastructure that we're talking about and, you know, how we're kinda poised for capitalizing on some of this industry that we're hoping will come here. And I, I mean, you can look around the nation and see people's infrastructures crumbling and they have no way to improve some of that. And so I understand all of that, but I'm just hoping that as we move forward, that some of us can keep in mind when we're doing this planning, that there's some really smart people out there that, you know, are projecting recessions in the next couple of years and some things like that. So we've gotta keep some of that stuff in mind too because we've got very high utility rates, not as necessarily so many people with high incomes. And if people start losing jobs or any of those kinds of things, we've got some of that stuff that we need to be worried about. So I think some of the comments in regards to, you know, how much longer do we have to wait for some of these big people to, you know, companies to come or, you know, whatever we're trying to accomplish, whoever we're trying to attract, we could possibly be running out of time, you know? And so I just think that's something that we should be thinking about and being mindful of and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Leah Berry, 406 West High Street. Hello. Again, thank you. Live in the same address, so that was a little disturbing to hear him text me that, so appreciation for that. Did wanna follow up on something, the planters that we were talking about that were gonna go up in the street. Where are we at on that?
Yeah, the, we had to back off for a little while because there's reflective materials that go down. You can't put it down in the winter. It got a little too cold, so as soon as the weather warms up, they've got materials ready to go in. So just couldn't be put down during really cold weather, so.
Okay. I was just curious. And to, not for nothing, but just my personal opinion, take it for what it is, concerning all of the positively promoting Pickwa and, you know, comments about certain groups being negative or anything towards the commission, I personally think that what you guys are doing is great. I know you guys work hard and
You've told us, you have, and I appreciate that.
I know you guys work hard and like Jay said, you know, everybody is entitled to their opinion, including positively promoting Pickwa. And anybody else who wants to come up here and say anything about anything, it's your right, say what you like. However, I do think that it is ironic that a group that promotes positivity also tries to say how negative another group is being or imply that another group is being negative when we in fact want nothing but the best for the citizens of Pickwa and we're trying to facilitate a voice and a place where they feel comfortable to do so. And not for nothing, but it's just my opinion.
We appreciate your opinion. Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right. Can I hear from the commissioners, or city managers' report? Let's do that.
Very quickly, just, I wanted to announce, we have two retirees this month with the city of Pickla. Bill Harding in Engineering Department, 45 years of service, and Fred Langston in Sanitation with 33 years. So, we have receptions and honoring them this month, but we appreciate all the many, many years of great service they've provided to the city. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioners' reports. Start with Fifth Ward.
You know, thinking about the two staff that have retired, you know, the longevity of staff shows a lot for our city and the fact that people hang around for a long period of time. And so, I just want to mention that, because a lot of our staff have been here for a long period of time, which says a lot for what we're doing here in the city. But I do want to mention, this past Monday was Martin Luther King Recognition Day, and we had a nice gathering at the YWCA, as the YWCA does each and every year. I know that Mayor Lee was there, and his daughter played the piano and did a lovely job. So, I congratulate Daria. I also want to congratulate her, as she won the spelling bee this year. She was a runner-up last year, but she won the spelling bee this year. So, amazing young woman, great leader here in our community for our young people. I mentioned the Jobs Ohio site mock visit. It was a wonderful time to gather with other business leaders, because there were different business leaders that were there from Pickla to be part of that mock site visit, to get an idea of kind of what is needed and what we're looking for as we go out there and try to encourage industries to come to our community and the things that we're doing right already. So, that was a wonderful time just to gather together and work with Jobs Ohio on that site mock visit. A reminder that the Last Full Measure movie premiere will be this Thursday. The tickets that were so graciously donated for veterans went in about 32 minutes at the school system, which, amazing just in itself, that we had that many people show up so quickly for that. But there is a, between 5:30 and 7:30 in the food court at the mall, there is an open reception for anybody that wants to come. The producer, there's a variety of people from the movie that will be there just to celebrate this wonderful day here in our city. So, I want to encourage our citizens to come out for that. And I know that Mayor Lee will be giving a proclamation that evening.
I'll have my glasses.
There you go. There you go. Also, last week, we had, between the Pickla Chamber of Commerce, myself, and I'm trying to remember, the EPA and Miami County, Santa, came together to talk about green initiatives in our community, and we had a good meeting with some of our industrial leaders on ways that they can work to be more green within their industries. And so, that conversation will continue on as we continue to look to be a more green city here in the city of Pickla. Also, I want to give a congratulations to our Pickla Area Chamber of Commerce, had their annual dinner last week, and Commissioner Pearson and City Manager Huff and myself were there, and Chris Schmiesing. I'm not sure if I'm missing anybody else that was there for that wonderful yearly celebration of the good things that are happening in our community. I want to congratulate Mimi Crawford for being recognized with the prestigious Order of George. Also, Lorna Swisher for getting the Cheryl Stifel Francis Non-for-Profit Award. And then, also Ryan and Amanda King at Can't Stop Running for being recognized as Business Persons of the Year. So, wonderful way to celebrate our community and all the good things that are happening here in the city of Pickla. Two other things I want to mention. One is, we had a fire over in Pickla Village across from Kroger. So, I do want to lift up the families and those that were affected by that. We are holding you in our thoughts and prayers, and it's horrible to hear something like that happen anytime, but especially this time of year. So, I know there were family and many people that were affected by that fire. And I also want to just lift up Dean Birch and the loss of his mother, and let you know that we also are lifting you in our thoughts and prayers. That's all I have.
That's a lot.
Mr. Grissom? Thanks. I want to reiterate that. I've seen a lot in the news with our emergency personnel and really commemorate, you know, the work they've done from a fire to, you know, drug bust. That goes a long way, and the citizens, I think, are definitely recognizing that. I just want to say, kind of over the past six months sitting on this council, it's been pretty interesting watching the reflections of people. And even though we're in a bit of a political environment in a year, I really like Jay saying that, you know, politics side, I think we're all working towards the best. Lee, you said it, too. We all want the best for our community and for our city. And I'm starting to realize, I think, a lot of people are seeing that's everyone's goal. We're not fighting against each other. And I just want to commemorate everybody for the attitudes that we're having. It's okay to disagree. It's okay to talk through it. I'll debate with the best of you. I love that. But it's okay to have those conversations, and as we're all working towards that common goal. So, yeah. Just an observation, that's been interesting, to kind of watch everybody come together. So, thanks.
Ms. Pearson?
I wanted to congratulate also all the winners from the Chamber of Commerce Dinner the other night. That was the first dinner I had attended. And wow, it's quite an evening, and it's a good way of meeting the leaders of our community. Congratulations to Lorna also, and Mimi. Congratulations to Daria Lee. I understand that she was winner in the 19th round.
Yeah, it kept going.
And, yes. And Kate and Eric was the runner-up from Pickla Central. So, congratulations to them. And a final thought, we should not be daunted by our problems or our disagreements, because there are always more new solutions than problems.
Ooh, that is very insightful. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Foote?
Chief, thank you for your guys' service and everything that you're doing to help clean up the city and make it a safer place for all the citizens, including the kids. You know, I'm not going to get on a soapbox up here, because I'm new to this. But one thing that I want to encourage our citizens to do is get out, get involved with the many boards that we have within our town. For me, I started off with the Park Board, and, you know, you can make an impact in that manner as well. You start learning more and more about the city when you start sitting on those boards and seeing how you can impact the growth of the city comes along with being on those boards. So, you know, I just encourage and I promote anybody to get involved with the city. That's a great starting point and help bring it all. You know, bring the conversations. Let's talk. Let's have disagreements. Let's disagree to disagree. But at the end of the day, we all have one common goal, and that's to grow this town and make sure that everybody's successful. Thank you.
I just want to add one more thing. I appreciate you coming out from the county side, too, because as you said, even as a city, we're still a county. And I really appreciate us all coming to work together as well for the better of the whole. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. All right. I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight and for their input. We may not all agree about a lot, about some things, and we may agree on others, but I think as long as we're all going forward and talking about making Pickla best, I think we're all heading in the right direction. And I see that's what we're doing. I like that. I have a question for the city manager about the rate study. Only part of the rate study was done?
Well, we do separate rate studies for each of our utilities. Power has just been completed.
Okay.
We'll do water this year.
Will that be available so everybody, because...
Yeah, we'll need to get it. We just got it.
You just got it today. Right?
Joe was breaking news back there for me. So, yeah, we'll get that out, but we just received, I haven't even seen it yet myself. So, just...
Neither have I. So, I was curious, because we want people to, I mean, it's a big thing, the utility thing. I mean, it's what started certain people's groups and brought attention. So, the more things that we bring to light, the less opposition I believe that we'll have. We may have more questions, and we can answer the questions, and we'll answer the questions that are out there. I also went to the MLK Day celebration. Dr. Doreen Larson was the keynote speaker, and she did a great job. Yes, my, I call her, everybody calls her my daughter. She's actually my niece, but I have legal custody of her. She calls me Dad. So, I mean, but Daria played the piano. There was a, what was the kid's name that sang that was so beautiful?
Oh, gosh, it was...
Josh Rich.
Thank you, Josh Rich.
Beautiful. The kid has a great voice. It was a good time, and it was a good lesson, a good day to remember. And we appreciate that. I'm finding new duties in my capacity as mayor. I got to go last Friday to a 102-year-old residence's house who was having a birthday. She is a big supporter of the city of Pickla. Her name's Joe Gass. When I worked at Children's Services, her daughter, Anita Gass, worked for the court system, and I know them, great people. So, we took her some city of Pickla things, and I brought her a birthday card and wished her happy birthday. And that was a nice thing to do. She had written in and wanted someone from the city to come. I volunteered to do that. I have no problem doing that. And I am open. People can contact me and call me at any time. And most of the time, I try to put people with the right person they need to contact, because I'm not always going to have the answers, but I'll find the person that does. Been to a couple mayor's meetings, and that has been an eye-opener to see how well-poised we are against Troy, Tipp, and some of the other cities. I think we can hold our own. I think we're doing great. I have lots of support from people out in the community, and keep it coming. I appreciate it, and I need it. And we'll keep on keeping on. Thursday is the commercial, or the showing of The Last Full Measure. Please, if you haven't heard about it, if you get a chance to go see it, go check it out. The commercials are fantastic. I mean, this is a major motion fixture based on a citizen from Pickla. And the premiere showing is Thursday. I'll be out there with a proclamation, so will Commissioner Hines and anybody else that's been invited. So, there's an open, like, was it an open section you said?
5:30.
5:30. Please go. It's going to be a wonderful time. And just want to congratulate the retiring city workers, Bill Harding and Fred Langston, for their long terms of service with the city. And congratulate them and thank them for all their hard work, and they deserve a nice break. Maybe they're going on to something else. Maybe they'll buy an RV and travel the country. I don't know, but they deserve, they deserve the break. And with that, I have nothing else. I need a motion.
Second.
Moved to second, dude. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are dismissed.